The last meeting of the city council for August, August 24th is in session. Invocation, I'll give the invocation and respects to the flag, Buck Roberts will give the respects to the flag. Let's stand please.
Our heavenly father, we are so thankful for all the good things you provide. We're thankful for this city that does so many things and does so many things well. We thank you for all of its employees. We thank you for the people that give up their time and their efforts to do the best for our community. We thank you for these people that are serving on city council. We thank you for their diligence and hard work and we thank you for all the people that are in the city. We thank you for those folks that are here to enjoy the city and enjoy all of the services it provides. Thank you for the city council's members that are not here. We ask you to special bless Lee Thompson that's recovering from surgery. We ask her to take good care of her and continue to heal her. Now bless this meeting tonight and let us continue to do what we need to do for you. Let us continue to do the right thing for our community. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have recognition and promotion of Captain Ronald Branion and Engineer Daniel Bagwell. Chief, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. We do have a couple of recognitions for promotion. I'd like to call up Ryan Branion and Daniel Bagwell. Ryan, do you have anybody here you'd like to recognize?
Captain Ryan Branion came to the Anderson Fire Department April 2002. He's a graduate of Cresson High School, volunteer firefighter with Flat Rock Bullwood Volunteer Fire Department. He was promoted to engineer June 2008, sergeant 2011, and lieutenant 2012. Ron has numerous certifications. He's the lead fire investigator on our arson task force and a reserve officer with the city police department. Daniel Bagwell recently promoted to engineer. He came to the fire department September 2011. He's a graduate of Palmetto High School, a volunteer with West Pelzer Fire Department. Has his firefighter one and two certifications, plus numerous other. And Ron and Daniel both are the top candidates in our promotional process. And Ryan, I'd like to congratulate you on your promotion to captain. Daniel, congratulations on your place as engineer.
Thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do.
The next piece of business, approval of minutes from August 10th, 2015. Are there any additions or deletions from this?
So moved.
We have a first. Anybody a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Ayes, ayes. The next piece of business of all business is requesting second and third reading of ordinance 1511, amending section 3-202-1 and section 3-207-8D of the Anderson City and of the City of Anderson procurement code. Is there any discussion concerning this matter? Would anybody make a motion that we accept on the first reading, second reading? So moved by Mr. Councilman Roberts.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh...
Councilman Kirby.
Mr. Moore, I guess would be the one to answer this, but how many different people in the city system are authorized to handle a bidding process or a procurement process? In other words, I know that the city manager's office doesn't do all those. And I mean, how many different people are doing this sort of thing?
Each division head would be authorized. I mean, we do not have central procurement here with a such procurement officer. So you have this set of procurement codes. It's the responsibility of each division head to follow those codes in whatever procurement may be in their budget.
Well, do we have any sort of checks and balances on those processes?
Yes. Number, well, the first one, and one of the things you're amending too, is the level that comes to you. So if it doesn't come to you for your approval and then you see those, then you have the city manager has an approval level. I apologize, I'm not sure what it is, maybe 10,000. And then under 10, the division head must sign off. And what you're signing off on is not only who the low bidder is, the lower responsive bidder, but also that the process has met the guidelines.
Well, the reason I ask those questions is, number one, we're increasing the level before we go through more formal processes. And I think that we need to be very sensitive to the procurement process throughout and make sure that it's done right by everybody that's doing it and it's done fairly. Because the goal is, number one, be fair to all the vendors, but also to get the best deal for the citizens of Anderson. And quite frankly, I've heard some not-so complimentary remarks about some of our procurement situations. And so I would really ask the city manager's office to take a closer look at that and make sure there's no abuses going on out there.
Okay. We'll also ask Councilman Kirby, we have a division head meeting on a regular basis, and we'll make sure that once this is passed by you, then we'll have a session but we'll cover not only these changes, but what the regular ones are and some other things. Okay?
Uh, Councilman Roberts.
Well, when we look at seeing who our bidders are gonna be, we're gonna, I think we've, in the process of looking at that again, are we not on qualified bidders?
I'm not sure I can answer your question. I mean, there's a couple of things in your procurement code. You do have a local preference. So if the business is located in the city, paying city taxes and business license, they get special consideration, some certain percentages depending on the purchase. And then a lot of times, depending on the project or service being bid out, we will prequalify bidders. So rather than run the risk of someone who's not qualified putting in a low bid, they have an opportunity to submit their qualifications ahead of time. And then whoever's handling that particular procurement judges them to be qualified, and then they can bid. But it's all about, number one, making sure the city gets the best price and there is competition and there's a level playing field.
I had thought we had talked about qualifying, like in, let's take just the easy one, HVAC work.
Right.
You qualify three to four, or however many you want to qualify.
Right.
And you go back to those people. You know them, they're the ones that you can depend on, and ever who in that group is lowest is the best way to do that.
Correct. I mean, we do have qualified vendors in that area.
That's just like we do in the discussion.
And they're asked to submit prices.
Do the same way.
Right. And all the local vendors are certainly included in that group as well. I mean, if you're outside the city, you can certainly put in your qualifications and do that. Same thing with plumbing, electrical, and any of those services.
That's what I asked. Are we doing, are we qualifying these businesses?
Yes. I mean, we have a preferred, we have a qualified list in those cases.
Okay.
But we'll go back and take a look. I mean, again, we always want to make sure our local vendors in particular get a good opportunity to bid. And, but we also want to make sure that the services or goods meet our qualifications.
And would you also include in that, looking at whether or not we might want to consider going to a centralized purchasing system?
Yep. Well, I say centralized, we don't have a procurement officer that would handle all that. So again, you have levels of, the finance department can peg, you can approve certain levels, and I approve certain levels. But, so they're pretty low, but there are all kind of things from not required to get bids to three oral bids, depending on, again, I don't have the prices. Then if you go to the next level, it's three written bids. And what this is, these are three, these are sealed bids. So each level you go up in the dollar amount is some requirement. There's almost, there's very little that doesn't require some kind of competitive process.
Well, my point is that, you know, the more people you have running this process, like each division head, however many of those there are, and others and so on, then the more chances are that somebody along the way is not going to understand the system properly or is not gonna follow the system properly. So we may want to look at doing a centralized deal so that you got one person that knows it inside and out, and it flows through that person. Now, we may not, but I think we ought to look at that.
We certainly will. I mean, the majority of municipalities of this size or larger do have central procurement. And our neighbors up the street, the county, do have a procurement officer that handles all of those processes. Okay?
Any other discussion?
I'll make a second to Mr. Roberts' motion.
Second, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Is there a motion for the third and final reading?
So moved.
Second from Councilman Roberts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes. All right. The new business, request consideration of agreement to contribute funds to public defender. This is something that we discussed at an earlier council meeting, and I'm sure there is some discussion. Does anybody have any discussion or questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor Protem, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I do have a question. Do we know, can you, can you explain a little further about how much money we already pay from the court revenues to support the indigent defense system without consideration of any additional amounts they're talking about tonight?
Um, oops. Frankie, you help me on that one.
And I do want to mention, I invited Mr. Young to be here in case y'all have a question for him or for young public defender to see. The amount that we pay to the indigent defense office, is that your question?
Yes.
The city of Anderson, I don't have the exact figures with me, last year paid about, I think, close to $60,000 to the state indigent defense office. We just, and that's, you know, part of the thing, and Mr. Young and I have differed over there about how much money we pay. But according to the information we got now from the state, that the municipalities, through their fine money and through the assessments that go into the public defender's office, the municipalities, municipal courts pay more than the magistrate's courts from that fine money. Now, there's other state money stuff that goes to the office. But there was, Mr. House has played, right at $2 billion last 2013, 2014, that went to the office of indigent. Statewide. Statewide.
Would you repeat that, please?
2.2 million statewide from municipalities in the assessment on the fines.
Okay.
There are a lot of assessments, as we've mentioned to you before, if the fine and these aren't, if it's a thousand dollars, basically there's 52% or it basically doubles and we pay over a thousand dollars with 52% going to the state for various things, not just the public defender. But they go to the criminal justice academy, where our officers are trained, no additional charge, and you got the Hall of Fame and their, you know, the public defender and there's just a, when we send the money, there's a report, is it quarterly we do or monthly?
Monthly. Last, the last figures we have for that, the total amount, it's 107% assessment that goes to the state that's divvied up. And we spent a close to $600,000 we sent in on that assessment from the fines, 500 and something. So 11 or 10.5% of that went to the office of indigent defense. That's where I'm getting the, somewhere around $60,000. And if we didn't have a court in the city, where would all those cases end up? They would happen in the magistrate's court. Exactly. But anyway, we don't think all the information got to our legislators who pass this as part of the budget. It's not, it's not a passed law. So it would have to be renewed. Like Mr. Kirby pointed out, it's hard to get some of these things undone. But the municipal association is hoping that they would take a little better look at it with some better information. But I think, you know, I think even some of the public defenders did not realize how much money is coming from municipal courts into their office. In addition to that, city taxpayers pay county taxes that pay for the magistrate's courts. But they fully fund the city court. And the way this thing is set now with this provision attached to the state budget, it means that if we don't agree to do this, then we don't receive the normal amounts of money from the state, aid to subdivision or those type funds. Is that right? I don't know if that would affect that. What would it affect if we don't do it? It means we would have to make some provision for indigent defense. Oh, so we'd have to hire somebody to do this? We'd have to hire somebody. That's what I think. Mr. Young's figures, you know, based upon my thing, they're reasonable, you know. It's one of those things, since we got to do it, he's given us a reasonable thing. Plus, we've got nine or 10 other municipalities in the county, and they're gonna probably participate in this too. If we didn't do that, then this, to me, is just the easiest route to go. Because there's other, there are questions about whether or not if we pay, you know, we provide a solicitor and if we provide the lawyer, then it could be a question about, you know, we might want to give them a bad lawyer, but because we want prosecutor cases. And that could be a conflict. This, to me, would be the easiest thing to do. They still, we would have to screen the indigency qualifications, which now would continue, I understand this, to the clerk's office. And they would be screened, just like, this would just keep things going like it's been going for the last 20 years. And so this is totally a one-year deal, and if next year they put this back in, then we could always say, well, we're gonna go a different route, hire somebody or do it. If it got, if the, you know, I might make a different recommendation if the price were different. Right. When they look at other avenues, if they're gonna continue from now on. And this, you know, like I said, during this time, we can look and see how much the public defender is actually down here working and seeing how much that's, we're getting there.
And municipal association, certainly on behalf of all the cities, is gonna take a harder look at, is this the right way? I mean, we have no problem funding the public defender's office, but is this the right way to do it? Or should the legislature budget from the state fines to do it versus tack it on to municipalities?
Seems like we get a lot tacked on.
Without paying for it.
I agree.
Let me ask this to Mr. Young while you're here. Mr. Young, how many indigent cases do you have in the city? Do you have those figures?
If I recall correctly, as of 2014, 2015, I believe it was around 160 cases.
160 cases?
Yes. The figure that I have proposed to all of the municipalities pretty much averages out to where each case is being paid basically $200 per case, based on the numbers that we have had in the past. If I, if I project out where we will be at the end of 2015, 2016, my guess, the value, dollar amount value will lower because I anticipate that there will probably be more cases. The reason being is because right now, right now, there is something that is resulting in a lot of people saying, no, I don't want a public defender or I don't want an attorney. Let me go ahead and handle this thing right here and now. I anticipate that when there are no restrictions placed upon them as far as them being able to get an attorney, those numbers are probably gonna go up a little bit. Over the past two years, the numbers, the number of cases have gradually increased anyway. And that's purely because crime is increasing. If you ask your law enforcement department, they will tell you that the number of cases that they're making is steadily increasing. So as a result, it results in more cases that we're handling as well. This proposal does not limit the number of cases that we have, we will handle in the municipality, in the Anderson City Court. If it was 160 last year and you approved the funding and we continue representation and it's 250 next year, it's that same dollar amount. That's where I say that the, the value of per dollar, per case will probably go down to the benefit of the, of the city of receiving indigent defense to cover more cases for less money. And that's one of the things that I took into consideration when coming up with the proposal of trying to bring all of the municipalities in to one agreement so that basically we get one attorney who's gonna cover all municipal court cases within the county regardless of the number of those cases. As opposed to the, each municipality, one, entering into their own individual agreements, which I think would cost each municipality more money. Two, without considering a per-case fee basis, because I think there are a couple of problems that will exist in that, in that, one, it then is gonna put the, the city in a position of having to screen defendants who are eligible and getting to that point where saying, we've allocated for 160 cases, we're approaching 180 cases, so we're gonna stop qualifying people for a public defender because you don't want to pay on that per-case basis. So I don't think that's a great, good option for anyone. The other option of that, when you're talking about the possibility of hiring a private attorney to come in and handle your indigent defense cases, quite frankly, I don't know of many, many private attorneys who are gonna come in and, and handle a case that they should be putting in about four, at least four and a half hours, according to the American Bar Association, per case for $200. I mean, that's valuing their time at about $50 an hour, and most private attorneys are way above that. But the other, when you're talking about hiring somebody else, you gotta then look at the other expenses, not only as far as it relates to having to screen these persons, which right now we're doing through the clerk of court's office. But you also run into the possibility of those cases that are your DUI cases, your cases that involve people who have mental health issues and things of that nature. Whereas if the attorney decides that they need an expert in that particular case, well, the funds for that expert will have to come from the municipality, which means there's an additional expense. And one mental evaluation could easily run you $1,200. If you imagine the number of people that are in the system who have mental health problems, if each of them end up having to have an evaluation, you could easily exhaust a pot of money real quick. My proposal, basically, continue things as is, just we're getting an attorney to handle nothing but municipality cases. If there are any expenses related to the rehiring of an expert or anything, that will be a expense that will be borne by my office utilizing state funds, which we will have the ability to be able to do through my office. Likewise, we will be able to continue to screen people through the clerk of court's office. The clerk of court's office basically use the same guidelines established by the federal government as far as the poverty guidelines. Court administration has said that those are the guidelines to be used to determine whether or not a person is indigent. So if anyone meets those requirements, and they, they put out that list every year that says that anyone with an income of this, with this number of dependents are considered indigent. That's the guidelines that the clerk of courts use. They screen it. They say that they, that they're qualified or they're not qualified. They forward the file to us if they qualified. If they're not qualified, then the person is required to retain their own attorney if, if they're not qualified for appointed counsel. The clerk of court's office by statute charges an administrative fee of $40. That's not a $40 fee that comes to the public defender's office. I believe once they collect that administrative fee, that there's some level of reporting that they have to do, that being the clerk of court's office. And I believe it's about a dollar and some odd cents that goes to indigent defense for that. So, so all of that will be taken care of if, if we're able to reach the agreement for the public defender's office to provide those services. I would like to address the issue as far as the amount of monies that, that are coming to the public defender's office or to indigent defense to clarify something, if I may.
Sure. Go ahead.
As, as Mr. McLean was stating, there's a, there's a 107% that is required to be sent in to the state. Of that 107% assessment, 10.5% goes to indigent defense. The rest of it is allocated to other agencies that are listed in the statute that says that they're, they get a part, a certain percentage of that monies that are sent in. But there's another statute that, that determines how that 10.5% is allocated. That 10.5%, 50% of it goes to, indigent defense is required, and when I say indigent defense, I'm referring to the Indigent Defense Commission in Columbia. They are required to set aside 50% of that, that apportion for capital defense because there's no other funding for capital litigation in the state. And that is for statewide litigation, capital defense. 15% of that remaining amount is then allocated to the conflict fund. If in, if in the municipal court, there's a car that is stopped and there are four defendants in, in that car, and they're all pointing the fingers at each other, the public defender's office can't represent all four of them. So what will end up happening is we will end up conflicting them out, and therefore private members of the bar will be responsible for representing that person, and they will get paid through the commission in Columbia. So 15% of that remaining amount of that, of the 10.5% is set aside for the conflict fund. So the remaining amount, which is about 30% I believe it is, 30, 35%, is what comes to indigent defense statewide. That amount there is what is prorated or is sent out according to all 16 circuits, according to their... according to the, uh, per capita amount based on population. So every bit of money that, that we're sending to Co, to Columbia to be allocated out, all of it does not come back to Anderson County, uh, for indigent services. Um, it is actually broken up, um, and then pieced out, and then there's a certain portion that is, um, divvied up based on the population of the, um, of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other questions, concerns?
I got, can I?
Go ahead.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you taking time, uh, to do it. Um, quick question, who pays for the clerk of court now? How's the clerk of court funded?
They are, they are funded through, um, state funds, as well as the county, um, provides funds to the, um...
We're already paying for the clerk of court to do what they do?
As citizens, yes.
Okay.
As a, as a municipality, you're funding your own clerk in your, in your court.
Okay. Um, and, uh, the, thanks for going over the fifty percent, the ten point five, um, it's interesting the way you're funding. It's typical of state, uh, government, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, that it's ten and a half percent, then half of that goes to public defense, but just capital cases, right?
Correct.
And then, a fifteen percent goes for public defense, but that's just the private attorney that has to do the pro bono work or whatever, so many hours of, you know, at a certain set rate by the state, is that right?
Correct.
And then the thirty-five percent comes to your office?
A portion of the thirty-five percent.
Well, it goes to a pool, and it's split sixteen ways, to each circuit, and you're one of the sixteen that gets it, based on the number of population.
Correct.
Got it. Um, it sounds like a pretty good deal that we're only gonna get charged a hundred and fifty dollars for each case. It just doesn't taste good that we're already, you know, having to pay, you know, we're paying for the clerk, and the way I look at it, is we're paying for the clerk of court, you know, and we're already paying in all of this, these other funds, that, you know, you don't really get all the money, I mean, I understand that, you're only getting, you know, thirty-five percent of ten point five of it, right?
Correct.
And, you know, just, it, it's sort of, and when I look at the different, that's another question, that last question I had, the other municipalities, it was based on, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars, and then we're gonna pay sixty percent of it, or forty-five thousand, we're gonna pay sixty percent. So you can pretty much figure out, like, the other municipalities, when we meet, you know, we meet as a group, you're guessing that maybe one of the smaller ones that only need to pay like a thousand dollars, they're only gonna probably have five cases.
Believe, I did not base it upon the number of cases. Um, I based it upon the population. Uh, what I did is I took the calculation of all of the, um, total population of the municipalities in the county.
Okay.
And then of that municipality, I determined what percentage of that total municipal population was Anderson City, what Belton, and West Pelzer, I, I determined it out there, and then I figured out what was the amount that I felt was reasonable in order for me to get an attorney in here with, uh, necessary support staff, necessary malpractice insurance, and workers' comp coverage. Um, and that's where I came up with the fifty thousand amount. From that amount is basically, I took your percentage of the population and, and held Anderson, asking Anderson for that percentage of that fifty thousand amount.
Okay.
So it, regardless of the number of cases, um, if, if some, Iva, for instance, if they, we had a total of, no, Pendleton, Pendleton, we had four cases last year out of Pendleton. Um, if for some reason, they agreed to, to the funding, um, proposal, and they have thirty cases this year, then we're covering thirty cases for that same amount.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, I think that's a, you know, that's a different discussion, 'cause they don't have a police force right now.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they're in the...
They get ready to have one, so there's probably a pretty good chance it's gonna be more than four, you know, in the next, in the upcoming year, 'cause they haven't had anybody to arrest anybody in the last year. But anyway, thank you for coming, I appreciate you taking, I appreciate you...
If I, if I may address, um, uh, you made the point about the, the funding of, of the public defender when you're funding other offices and not having to fund them. Um, the consideration that you also have to take into account also is that, um, the municipal courts fund, uh, usually a prosecutor, usually a judge, and their clerk's department, but they don't fund anyone individually for indigent defense, whereas, as, as citizens of Anderson County, we're funding, you know, the solicitor's office, who don't provide any services in your court.
Absolutely.
And you're funding the clerk of court's office, who don't provide those services.
It's never unma, made sense to me, if you public, solicitor's office should be funded here, public defender should be, you know, pretty dang close, the funding is never even close, but that's a different, quite a different story.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
I have one question, Mr. Young. I think you said it earlier, you're gonna have a single dedicated attorney for municipalities for this, so if, 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 let's say, you know, a hundred and six, let's say it's a, a, for whatever reason, you said some of those cases may be dropping off, getting lower, uh, just due to trend, they're still gonna be dedicated only to handling our work?
That, that is correct.
They're not gonna pick up another workload from, you know, outside or, or another area through your office, right? It's gonna be dedicated to these...
My plan is, is to, uh, with these funds, is I'm going to basically contract an attorney who's gonna do municipal court cases for my office. They will not do any other criminal cases out of my office, but usually, most contract attorneys are attorneys who are in private practice, and usually, they will have, you know, their family court, their car accidents, their own other practice going as well. Um, but they will be doing nothing but municipal court stuff.
It's one hundred percent towards that, and nothing outside.
Exactly. Exactly. And is, and is my hope that by, by getting one person to do nothing but municipality stuff, as opposed to one of my attorneys who have to do magistrate court and general sessions court, and do, uh, municipal court stuff, it will hopefully allow the court to run a little bit better, because now, there's less opportunity of there being a conflict, a scheduling conflict between mi, uh, municipal court and general sessions court, which means municipal court have to push theirs off, because general sessions would have priority. Um, so hopefully, by having that one person, the court will be able to continue to run on a more regular schedule and handle cases, and, uh, closing them out, um, on a quicker basis also.
Any other questions, Mr. Young?
I'll make motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Now, what'll happen is, a city attorney will be authorized to enter an agreement with, uh, Mr. Young and his office to, with the terms of what you have in your backup.
I think it's a good case for all the citizenry to, you know, contact their legislator.
Legislature.
Yeah, this is a big deal, and it's probably not gonna get better, as we all know, in funding.
And if they do, I mean, he needs funding. It's not his fault that he's not getting funded about it, and, and, yeah, make sure he gets funded.
If, if I may...
Go ahead, Mr. Young.
Uh, when, when you ask citizens to contact their, their legislator, um, there is a pool of money that, that all municipalities are required to collect for victims' assistance, um, that if you look at the statute, you're not able to touch it, but it's a lot of money that's, that's being collected for victim assistance, uh, that could be reallocated. I'm not saying take anything from victims' assistance, but there's a pool of money that is, is being allo, being required to be withheld, that the municipalities can't touch it. So I, I just throw that out.
Appreciate it. Next item of business, request consideration referral with planning commission, a petition to rezone fourteen oh six, Narden Avenue from R. Five, single-family resident to G. C. General Commercial. Any questions, concerns?
I make motion that, uh, we, uh, refer this to planning commission, so...
Second. Okay, Mr. Ca, uh, Mr. Harbin was, made the motion? Mr. Roberts, seconded? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Ayes have it. Okay, the third item on the new business is request consideration of resolution authorizing participation in the state health insurance plan. I'll leave it to you, mister.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Uh, yes, we had a chance to speak with most of the council members last week, so that we could get this resolution on the floor tonight. But basically, what it does is, it authorizes the city of Anderson to apply for membership in the state health insurance plan, and I think we share with most of you, it's not a guarantee, but it has to be in by August thirty-first, if you wanna be considered for membership, starting January one, two thousand and sixteen. So you'll do that, we'll make all, get all the data in, but Peggy and her staff done a great job, kinda searching this out, and the bottom line right now is that, uh, with comparable benefits to our current blue choice and this, it looks that, uh, the city of Anderson, due to a lot of proactive work and some other things, could save up to a million dollars per year. So we'd certainly recommend that you approve this resolution, and we will pass around for your signature and get it to the, to the state health plan, to make sure we're in the works.
Speaking to that, um, I'd just like to say that I've, I've been on the state PIBA plan for years and years and years, it's a great plan, uh, I think it's one of those things that, that would be behoove us to do, to do this. Uh, any discussion concerning this?
Don't let Mr. Young hear this.
Oh, yeah.
He might want more money next year.
More money next year, right.
I'll admit that. I'll admit that.
Uh, any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the staff, whoever was in charge of trying to find these savings and uncovering it for us.
I agree with that, totally.
Did I make a motion to, we, to approve it, or whatever we do?
Mr. Harbin makes a motion, we approve this, second from Mr. Roberts. Any, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Moore, we have an administrative briefing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Just a couple of things, but the main one is that each year about this time, in, in September primarily, you pass resolutions that go to Anderson County, the Anderson County Transportation Committee, and the South Carolina Department of Transportation, requesting roads inside the city to be resurfaced. And, uh, this process is a little different this year, in that, uh, some of the funding may change and how they go about changing. Let me try to describe that. I do have Maurice and, and Michael Gay here, who've done a lot of work, again, I thank them, they've driven every street and rated it based on what the state uses, uh, and we put those in some priority order for your consideration. We, we really wanna put, make this public, so that by the next council meeting, you could pass a resolution, and we can get these in the hands of the decision-makers. But here's kinda the bottom line, way things look now, there is two to three million dollars of local gas tax that has always come back to the Anderson County Transportation Committee for allocation, and you, we always make specific applications based on your resolution. They're looking at that a little bit different, and then there's, excuse me, then there's this list that, of money that comes from county tax dollars, back to our point, that the city residents are also county residents, and pay into that roughly two million dollars that they have. And what the county and the CTC have asked us first to do is, we're gonna allocate you kind of a pot of money for local roads, but we want you to take that and match it with the CTC money, that two point two to three million. So you're gonna kinda see a list of roads that are falling in that category, and we'll submit those to the county, and in our case, you have Mr. Crowder and, and Mrs. Floyd, who've allocated roughly seventy thousand a piece of their money to go in the city. So we'll take that seventy, and that list you see, we'll try to make it worth at least a hundred and forty or more, depending on how the CTC does it. So if you approve that list, that goes. The other piece is really good news for the entire state, but also specifically for our community and the city in general, that the state legislature did allocate seven and a half million, one time, specifically for state secondary roads, and that's in Anderson County, it was a bigger allocation statewide, but that's what's coming to the county. Uh, that does not require a match, so you'll have that list, it goes to the county transportation committee, and with a lot of weight from the DOT, they'll be looking at that. So that list you have there is of the state secondary roads. The final thing I would say, then, when you can look at the list, and if you wanna make any, have any suggestions for something we may have missed, what Mike and Maurice have done is, the DOT uses this system, the pavement condition is number one, that's fifty percent of the decision-making process, they also look at average daily traffic counts, twenty percent economic slash community impact, ten percent, and the population that would be affected, twenty percent. So as we rode each road and documented this, that's how the, the list, uh, comes up. I'm not gonna go through all these, uh, we've tried to send them out to you via email, certainly the public, we'll put them on our website, if you have no problems with them, and give anyone who'd like to weigh in, but you can see, again, on the attachment, there's a list of county district one, we've only shown the top ten, there are plenty more. And then in the middle there, you have, um, the city of Anderson, local paving tier, that, that's, you know, our local paving, and then you have council district two, and then the final page is really what, we put the top twenty-five state, those are the secondary roads that would come out of that seven and a half million, yep. So, um, what we would ask you to do is consider that, uh, if you have any input from yourself, and we'd like to bring the proper resolutions to those bodies, we'll have, uh, two, three, bring those to the next council meeting. Anything from Mike, or Maurice, or us? Call us if you do, okay?
Upcoming events?
Uh, just a couple, whoops.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Herbert.
Nobody, okay. I heard somebody.
I thought I did say...
Ask a question. Uh, just on the upcoming events, just a couple of things, uh, we have a finance committee tomorrow at noon, and then, uh, September one, there's the economic, which was formerly the downtown committee, since we rolled all that into, a couple of matters for their consideration, and then as we move into September, there's lots on there, and I'm not gonna go through all of those, you can look, number of events in Carolina Ren Park, and, uh, which I believe we received an award earlier today for...
What?
Yeah, best, uh, public venue.
Speaking of that...
The answer voted on by the people who, of, who subscribe to the Anderson Independent Menu, Carolina Ren Park was voted the best public venue.
Very good.
And, uh, so again, we'll continue, most of those events in September are in the park, other than your council meetings and the county municipal association. That's all we have in, uh, administrative briefing, we do have one matter in executive session, it's personnel matter regarding the city manager contract.
Okay. Do we, uh, have a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
Mr. Roberts, and second by Mr. Harbin. All in favor, say. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're in executive session.
Entertained a motion to go, come out of executive session?
So moved.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? In executive session, we discussed, um, the city manager's contract, and the council will instruct the city attorney to, to go with, um, the wishes of, uh, to fill out, there are a couple of things that we need to work out in regards to contract, but to go forward with completing the contract, in order that we might have it on our agenda for our next business meeting. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, first, I'm Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.